Welcome those that are visiting with us in the audience this evening. We will call on, Remy, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes. Don't ding it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Remy. That takes us to the point in our agenda this evening where we have an invitation for public comment. And so, any individual that would be interested in the audience to participate in the public comments are invited to do so. You may speak on any topic other than a matter that is in litigation, a quasi judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing at some future date. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please, we'd ask you to fill out one of the speaking cards in the back and then we can work off of that. Speakers may not yield their time. To other individuals, in order to encourage an environment of openness, courtesy, and respect for differing points of view, please retain from behavior that is disruptive to the meeting such as making loud noises, clapping, shouting, booing, or any other activity that disrupts the orderly conduct of the meeting. abusive language will not be tolerated. So is there anyone in the, that would like to speak to the council this evening? I didn't see any cards come up. Okay. Well, that takes us to our presentations this evening, and we have two presentations. And the first is going to be on the Affordable Housing Task Force Annual Update. So I'll turn that over to Heather Richards, our planning director. And so, welcome Heather.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. This is our annual update to you for the Affordable Housing Task Force, where we'll talk about accomplishments from the past year and next steps. Actually, two councilors are the chair and vice chair for this task force. Remy Drapkin is the chair and Kelly Minkie is the vice chair. So, we'll talk about why there is an Affordable Housing Task Force, who's on it, their action plan, accomplishments, and then next steps, which is actually updating the action plan, which will be a future resolution for you to consider tonight. In terms of affordable housing, there's need in McMinnville. Affordable housing is described as anybody who's living in a home where more than 30% of their budget is going to their home expenses is in an unaffordable situation. A lot of people think it's just about subsidized housing, and it's not necessarily that. So here in McMinnville, these are old statistics because they're not collecting this in the census data right now, but this is from 2016. But homeowners, one-third of homeowners with mortgages are in unaffordable conditions, and renters, a little over 50% of renters are in unaffordable housing as well. Just recently, looking on the different real estate websites where they're beginning to track trends, McMinnville has been flagged as a potential high foreclosure community in the next couple of years, based on the number of people who are in mortgages beyond their means at this point in time. And we know from previous presentations I've given you that people are sort of stretching to get into the homes right now. So, in 2018, our median household income was about $55,000, and the median listed home price was $377,000. The updated numbers for that is our median household income right now is about $57,000, and the median listed home price is $389,900, and the median price of a home sold is $338,000. And those numbers are from the last three months that's trending on Zillow, it's not even our highest real estate months of the year. The average rent for an apartment is about $1,800. I went onto both Zillow and Redfin last night to see what's available in terms of what's on the market and the different price ranges, and I'll share a little bit more with you about that. In terms of a quick snapshot, this is from two years ago when we were doing our housing needs analysis and pulling data. In 2018, for Yamhill County, fair market rent was about $1,330. So we're up to $1,800 at this point in time for what's available on the rental market. Our median sales price, you've seen this, but it's going up here in Yamhill County and here in McMinnville especially, and it has gone up quite a bit in the last two years. And the average sales price for 2019 was $398,000 for the calendar year for homes in McMinnville. So what does that mean? This shows if your household earns, we're a little bit higher than that now, so we're at $57,000, but if your household earns $55,400, it sort of describes what you can then afford in terms of rent or housing prices to stay in that affordable housing percentage of 30% of your budget going into your housing. So, looking at that, looking at that, you can see where our average sales price is. It's beyond what our 120% of household income earnings is, significantly beyond. And so what I did was I went online to see if I was earning these different wages and was looking for a home in McMinnville, what's available that I can buy. And it's interesting because we do actually have, we've talked a little bit about the fact that McMinnville has a lot of manufactured home stock here, 12% of our single-family dwelling units are manufactured homes, which is about twice what you see as a norm in communities, and that's good, it's serving the market, and it's still serving that market. So those homes are available on the market right now and are transacting, they're a little bit more difficult to finance, but they are moving. So looking at what's online and what's moving, there is transactions taking place at that price level. So if you were earning 75, if you were earning household income $25,000 and you could afford a home to $75,000 to $88,000, there are manufactured homes and mobile homes on the market for you. If you're earning about $40,000 to $50,000, we then start moving into a market where you're still in manufactured homes in terms of the price point. And I apologize because I can't see it on my computer or on your screen.
So Heather, but on manufactured homes, so whether it be, they still have to pay for their space, not, which can be upwards of $300 to $400?
Yes, several hundred dollars a month added to that. So I'm just showing you sort of the range. There's the lowest priced home on the market today in McMinnville is the manufactured home you see there on the far left for $39,900. And then there's probably a half dozen manufactured homes ranging anywhere between $70,000 to $90,000. They're also on the MLS. There aren't many homes at all in the range of $141,000 to $201,000. They're still manufactured homes that are pricing out in that range, and there's also one property that is 600 and some odd square feet that's been on the market for a while that's pricing into that range as well. So I don't know if it's not passing inspections or not, but we don't have any stick-built homes in that price range. And then if you go, and that's for 100% of median household income and less. And then if you go to someone who's earning 120% of median household income and what they can afford from 200 to 245, 50,000, what's available right now, the lowest price in that range is $249,000, and it's a 900 square foot home. And then you're really leaping into the threes, fours, and fives. So it's indicative that there is a supply issue in terms of housing at this level. And talking about the rentals that are available right now, we do have a very tight rental market and low vacancy rates. The rental market has escalated in the last couple of years, so it's created a problem for people finding rentals too. The good news is we do have a lot of rentals being built right now that should come on the market in the next year or two that will really help with supply. So what does that mean in terms of the share of households in McMinnville? We are looking at probably half of our households are at 120% of median household income or less, and per what I just showed you in terms of what's available in the housing market for them. And then the other half is in a higher market. And why that's important is the Affordable Housing Task Force is looking at serving those households that are making 120% of area median income and less, so bringing it all the way up to workforce housing. So this, what I've done here is shown, you've seen this slide before, but from an affordable housing perspective, it shows where we have deficit in our housing supply and where we have some surplus. If you'll see, we have deficit in supply at the lower end, just below 50% of median household income. And so they're either stretching to go into the next range of supply or not able to find anything. And then we also have deficit on our very higher end, and so they are now buying into the supply that's sort of hovering right about 120%. And so, the, just below the 50%, where we have a deficit is one of the focuses of the Affordable Housing Task Force in terms of trying to get more units on the ground. And this is typically subsidized housing at this level. So it's housing that's not, that people can't afford fully with their own income and is subsidized by some other resource. So you've seen the pictures for the housing deficit. We feel that that's one of the reasons why we do have an affordable housing attainability problem here in McMinnville. We just don't have as much supply as what we feel we need to in terms of being able to accommodate the demand. We've been building at about half the amount that we have historically. And there's been some dialogue as to whether that's true through the years. So Jeb Ladeen, who keeps a record of all the building permits year after year, sent me his spreadsheet. And it's interesting because we have had trends of 200 to 300 housing units per year all the way back to 1975, which is his earliest year in his spreadsheet. And when I did an average from 1975 to 1999, which are the years prior to this chart, the average over those years were 196 units per year. So there's been sort of this steady program here. There was slow growth years in the 1980s, there's about five years there where it was significantly slower growth, hovering around 50 units per year or so. And this is indicative of the supply issue as well. So we know we need to be preparing for future growth and trying to figure out what does that mean in terms of providing housing for future populations. And we're looking at planning horizon 2041 and 2067. And part of our housing needs analysis that we need to do per the state regulations is identify what does that mean in terms of affordable housing, types of housing that people can afford, and income levels associated with it. So we went through an analysis for that, and this is for the 2041 horizon. So until 2041, we're looking at about 5,000 new homes and what we need there. We think about 1,000 of those homes will be subsidized housing, so serving people making 50% of area median income or less. That's a lot of housing units that need, in that bracket of housing supply. We also, there's about 719 homes which could be most likely subsidized housing, or maybe there's a way, we're trying to think through in the housing strategy, how we can bring different types of housing product online, tiny homes or something like that, that we can get into an affordable place for this demographic, so there might be a way to do it without subsidized housing. And then there's about a little less than 1,000 homes that would be workforce housing, so 80 to 120% area median income. So we are looking at trying to figure out how to provide housing for about 2,700 households that fall under that charge with the Affordable Housing Task Force of looking at up to 120% area median income. And that's over the next 20 years, or 22 years, looking at 2041. So, in terms of Affordable Housing Task Force, they are appointed by you as the city council. Their purpose is to review and recommend to the city council policies and amendments to current zoning ordinances, building division review processes, system development charge fees, street standards, and other governmental policies that encourage, and this is the important part, that encourage increased access to and construction of housing for citizens earning 120% or less of McMinnville's median income. So we're looking at trying to put projects and programs together that are going to encourage more units being built that serve that population. When the task force was first put together in 2016, the city also adopted an action plan, which was an action plan over four years that had immediate midterm and long-term actions that we've been working on as a task force. Most of them are completed or are still underway and in discussion, and I'll walk through the ones that are underway in the presentation. So if you look at it, we've tackled most of these in dialogue and evaluated them. Some of them successfully we've completed and others we're still working through. The one that we didn't actually move forward was reaching out to local service groups to involve them in neighborhood stabilization programs. That's based on an old model, the HUD's Neighborhood Stabilization Program, where those funds are no longer available in terms of being able to do that. So accomplishments this year, this has been a year of due diligence and tenacity. We've really been trying to turn over stones, anything to put together an affordable housing project in terms of incentivizing that new construction of these housing units. And we've had limited results, so we're reaching out and we're trying to put projects together and are talking to a lot of people but are not yielding the results thus far. In terms of inclusionary zoning, in the past year, as you know, there was a bill that passed through the legislature that allowed inclusionary zoning for apartment complexes, apartment structures of 20 units or more. We don't have a lot of those built here in McMinnville. Most people are building 12-unit structures because of the cost of construction, and so the state law would not apply to that. So we went to the legislature and we said, after we came to you to city council and asked if you would be comfortable with this, how do we work with Representative Noble to change that law so we could bring it into McMinnville for consideration for housing projects and not have it so narrowly defined? And he put together a House bill, he put it together as a pilot project for McMinnville, and made it all the way through the process, through the House, went over to the Senate, and had Senate support, but at the last minute was gutted and stuffed with another project by another senator. And so that did not move forward, which was disappointing. We've had discussion about construction excise tax as a means of developing a fund to help affordable housing. We've been underweighing this discussion for about two, two and a half years now, and have done the analysis as to what it will yield for the city if we went forward with something like this at different levels. So there's different levels that are enabled in the state law. We've gone through that analysis to see what it looks like. We've done a sliding scale recommendation in terms of applying it only to those homes that are not being built to serve the population that we're trying to serve through the Affordable Housing Task Force, and that's the tiered estimate, and we put that together as well as a program. And what we heard is resistance from the development community, because this is another fee attached to new housing development. And the concern is you're always looking to new development as a place to find fees, and are there other resources that you, the city, can consider for affordable housing? So you're not always just relying on new development. So the Affordable Housing Task Force took that into consideration and started looking at what are other opportunities, and that's kind of been the discussion for this year. We reached out to Bend and asked them to work, share with us what's worked in Bend. And this is, I want to put a chart like this together for McMinnville, but this shows how the median home price has really soared in Bend over the last two years and left behind the affordability in terms of what the community residents can afford and not afford there. So obviously they have a problem, and so they started looking at what does that look like? So the planning department can put together regulations for affordable housing, but they also put together an affordable housing division, which had goals, and the goals are to essentially build as many units as they can that are affordable housing units. At the time, Ben was going through their UGB expansion discussion, and so they started talking about how can we leverage that as a tool for this effort? And because there was a lot of property owners who wanted to participate in the UGB, they then got out and said, if you want to be part of the urban growth boundary, we need a commitment from you to build affordable housing at a certain level on your property. So you will start considering it if you come in and say, we're willing to set aside this much of our new housing development as affordable housing development. And they started having that discussion as a community. They also shared with us their final results to date. So we've been talking a lot here in McMinnville about SDC's fees, are they a barrier to affordable housing? So we exempted those, and it hasn't shown any uptick in terms of affordable housing units being built. And the same is true in Bend, they really aren't seeing that either. The two things that they're seeing really being leveraged effectively to creating units was leveraging their Affordable Housing Fund. So they do this RFP with developers and say, we will help participate in a housing development project financially if you come forward with an affordable housing plan. So, and it's competitive, so the developers come in and say, I'd like you to participate at $500,000, and I will bring in 20 affordable housing units for that. And so they start waiting all their project proposals and invest every year in different projects. So that has yielded units, and then they also are community development block grant entitlement community, and they leverage those too. This shows the, where they're looking to get the deed restricted affordable housing based on their UGB process. Those properties that are in the lime green are the ones that have affordable housing policies on them. So the property owners have agreed to this affordable housing program associated with those properties as it comes into the UGB and gets annexed into the city. And those will be deed restricted properties. So they will be built for affordable housing and stay in an affordable housing program for a certain period of time. So with that, the task force said, okay, we're working on the UGB, we're not at that place where we can start having the same discussions that Bend is having, but we can look at the Affordable Housing Fund, which I showed you, showed the best yield for them. And that's when you start having the discussion here at city council as part of your fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget to put that fund together. And $188,000 is in that fund. And so currently, there are several different uses under discussion for that. One will be bringing to you a purchase of a foreclosed property from the county for affordable housing. We plan to bring that to you next, at your next meeting on February 25th. We've been working on that with the county for the past year. And what it is, is it's picking up one of the residential properties that the county gets in foreclosure for deferring paying on property tax revenue for the property owner. And so, we will buy the property at the same value of the forgone taxes, so the taxes owed on the property, which will then be distributed to the different taxing districts. And then we will put an RFP together for developers to come forward and purchase the property and invest in rehabilitation of it. And then for that purchase price, which is presumably less than market, they then put it into service for a certain number of years. And service meaning that they provide it to an affordable housing nonprofit provider for them to use for a certain amount of years for affordable housing, for free. And there are developers interested in this who want to participate in this program. We're also looking at a property with Yamhill County Soil and Water Conservation District as a potential pickup for affordable housing that might be brought to you relative to this fund. We're only at the very beginnings of those discussions. And then we're also in discussion with Yamhill County and Newburgh about funding a regional homeless coordinator that will work in Yamhill County throughout the region on leveraging the homelessness discussions in terms of projects. This identifies where the Yamhill County Soil and Water Conservation District property is, it's three acres, that's adjacent to the Shugwin Park. And adjacent to an elementary school and future middle school project.
Heather, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So that would be, that project would be just one residence or more than one?
So presumably more than one. This is coming from, and I'll talk a little bit about another effort, they have, they're all sort of coming together. The state released $325 million in this biennium, additional funds for affordable housing to build units. And in McMinnville, we have been trying to find a project to put together that we can submit to the state for that. They want to fund something in McMinnville, they recognize the need, we haven't had a project in many years. So they're interested in funding here, but we haven't been able to put a project together. And so we started looking at property maps and looking at every potential opportunity. And from that effort, this discussion came forward. It's three acres, so hopefully there'd be the opportunity to put more than one unit, obviously, on that and look at some sort of complex.
Nice.
Right. We've also been in dialogue about the floating zone concept, and Tom's going to share with you a little bit more about that, but we've spent some significant time this year working that through the planning commission and the industrial stakeholders, business and property owners in terms of dialogue. And this is the discussion about trying to create opportunities responding to the state funds that they released this year for affordable housing projects. This is, $325 million was a big lift for the state, so this is additional funding outside of the regular funding that they put into affordable housing. It's just for this biennium that we're aware of, so we wanted to see how we could aggressively respond to that. So what we did was, we started looking for partners and how we could as a task force help facilitate a project. We don't build projects, but maybe we can bring the people together to start talking about it. We met with the Housing Authority Board to see what their future plans and intentions were, and they don't have any property in McMinnville to build on, to build a project on. We brought in partners from Salem to discuss projects, so partners from Salem that have built affordable housing projects there to see if they'd be interested in something in McMinnville. Those are nonprofit builders. We brought in for-profit builders who build affordable housing projects to see if they'd be interested. We visited with the state and said, the state was working on a project readiness program and we said, and looking for a pilot project for that. So we raised our hands and said, you know, McMinnville would be interested, can we participate? And then we also lobbied with the state. The state has land acquisition funds that was only available for smaller communities, and so we started working with them to see if we could make those funds opened up to larger cities because the smaller communities weren't taking advantage of them. And so the state did decree to open it up in November. The problem with all these efforts are they're all dependent upon having a piece of property and putting a project together, and we can't find the land to do that. So most, most of these opportunities are no longer available to us. But we have as a task force been looking at the maps again and visiting with nonprofits and churches and others who do have property to see if they'd be interested in moving something forward. The Housing for Homeless Subcommittee was formed out of the Affordable Housing Task Force, and it was formed in February, March of 2017, in an effort to sort of target the discussion and make it more broad based on how to serve our homeless populations. And just recently, in 2020, in January, the decision was made to fold it back into the Affordable Housing Task Force in terms of an effort moving forward, because we felt like we had, as a task force in that subcommittee and bringing everyone together, that we were able to move forward with the regulatory, removing the regulatory barriers that we could remove to incentivize more housing for homeless projects. But at that point in time, all the entities working on those types of projects were working in, you know, independently and putting their energy there, and it was no longer working as this sort of subcommittee. So we are in a position where we want to support what everyone's working on in any way that we can, and we'll continue to have updates and discussions about it at the Affordable Housing Task Force. Just to remind people, what that subcommittee did is it focused on four different demographic groups, youth, senior women, vehicular homeless, and veterans, and put together work plans for them. And it's moved the dime on all of those different groups except for the youth mostly, youth and senior women, I guess, and we weren't able to move those forward to the outcomes we were looking for. But the veterans, we were able to bring in a lot more vouchers for veterans for housing them, and the vehicular homeless program, as you know, looked at the overnight safe car camping program, which has been moderately successful in McMinnville. We know people are using it, they don't have to apply to use it, we just are hearing anecdotally the stories that it's being successful. We also looked at how can we put together a project? We looked at tiny homes and worked with Blanche House in both 2017 and 2018. They were building tiny homes for Portland. Portland wasn't able to bring it online, so we volunteered to be a pilot city with them for a project. Our building official inspectors went out there, worked with them on onsite inspections and foundation design so we could bring it into the city. We also developed a partnership with the McMinnville School District so that they would help design some of these tiny homes. This is an assessable one that they designed that we now have the construction documents for from the ESA program. And then we worked with Hope on the Hill to see if we could bring those tiny homes into their project that they were working on as they were trying to put something together. And eventually, it got to the point where we just couldn't find any land to land the project. So we were able to bring the partners together, but we weren't able to find the land to put the project on. In terms of this past year, we worked on the Dustin Court and Marshaling Program, and then the subcommittee put together work plans, new work plans. And then the subcommittee put together work plans, new work plans for a communication plan that communicated efforts underway and data dispersment for evaluating the chronically homeless solutions, solutions for housing the chronically homeless and increasing shelter opportunities for youth. And we developed these new work groups and they started working on these discussions. And in that effort, we learned that a lot of those efforts were already taking place amongst the agencies. So the next steps for the Affordable Housing Task Force is we have gone through the existing action plan. Either things are underway or have been completed. So we had a discussion about updating the plan. What do we need to start thinking about now moving forward? And what does that look like? And this came out, this was coordinated with our housing needs analysis and housing strategy work that was also going on. So that plan is before you tonight. To go over it very briefly, it has two ongoing efforts on it that we will constantly be thinking about and working on, which is evaluating programs to fund affordable housing that the city can influence. So that's the transit lodging tax funds for affordable housing. That's urban renewal funds for affordable housing, which we're working on our city center housing strategy right now. That's the construction excise tax discussion and the effort to see if we can have McMinnville designate as a principal entitlement city under the Community Development Block Grant Fund Program. The 2020 census should help us in that effort because it will yield new data and hopefully we might be able to qualify for that. And it's not, it's not a program where it's 50,000 people. It's a very unique, discreet other program based on your population base and your affordable housing needs. Then our second ongoing one is to support partners in their pursuit of affordable housing funds for their projects. So low income housing tax credit, that's the Housing Authority applying for those funds from the state. Home ownership programs like Habitat for Humanity and Community Home Builders, the Oregon Affordable Housing Tax Credit, the Housing Rehabilitation Program that we just got that $500,000 grant from the state to do here in McMinnville. And then state affordable housing funding as it comes out. Then we have a short-term action plan. Most of these are really looking at some development code things. So still trying to work through our development code and regulations to incentivize new units. One is to continue the discussion about the emergency shelter ordinance, so the floating zone, evaluating an impact of a density bonus for developers if they include affordable housing units. Looking at the House Bill 2001 element by allowing duplexes, cottages, townhomes, row houses and plexes in single family zones. Promoting infill development. So we're setting up designs and development standards where this would be allowed in both new development and as infill in existing neighborhoods, but in a compatible way with the neighborhoods. To look at allowing cohousing in group quarters and single resident occupants, SROs, which are kind of like a boarding house. Allowing small or tiny homes as outright product and identifying opportunities for them. And then evaluating our parking code as a barrier to housing. So that's all in the work plan for this next year in terms of code regulations and evaluation and removing barriers. And then for the following year, looking at developing a high-density residential zone, developing a community land trust. So if there's an opportunity to partner with a private developer, pursuing a land bank for affordable housing, advocating again for inclusionary zoning, knowing that we're in the short session, it doesn't make sense now, but maybe bringing it back to the next longer session. Exploring a multiple unit limited tax exemption program and exploring an affordable housing property tax abatement program. And then long-term actions are to evaluate the transfer of density for protection of natural features. So we will be doing a natural hazard, a natural features planning process over the next year as part of our growth planning. And so we'll be able to identify those natural resources that we want to protect as a community. And if they are on developable lands, how do we transfer what would normally be built on those lands into higher density and adjacency to it? Developing financial incentives, supporting inclusionary zoning, explore vacant property tax, and then explore a fee for demolition of affordable homes for expensive homes. So the Affordable Housing Task Force voted on these. It wasn't a unanimous vote. There is, we have two people from the development, two builders on the committee, both Howard Astor and Alan Rudin, and they're there to represent the development committee so we can hear from them and their concerns. And they are concerned about several of these items because they do impact development and the cost of development. And so that's why we deliberately have put evaluate and explore in several of these discussions because we're not saying these are matches for McMinnville. We're saying these are conversations we need to have to see if they are matches for McMinnville in terms of what we want to explore and implement. So that is the Affordable Housing Task Force update. The task force meets the fourth Wednesday of every month from 10 to 11. And Councilor Draft can is the chair. Mayor, I saw you smirking if you're laughing at my little illustration there.
Yep.
But it kind of feels that way.
Well, I have the tent. You can buy the property and then you put a tent on.
Yeah. But, any questions?
We'll open it up. Questions for, for Heather?
I have one.
Go ahead, Wendy.
Heather, can you go back to the slide that talks about our deficits, the chart? Earlier, earlier, earlier. Next, earlier. There we go. So I know that we've talked, you've mentioned this before also, I think, one of the times we were talking after the urban renewal advisory about the deficit on the upper end as well. I know that we have, we don't spend a lot of time talking about that. I know that a big driver of that is lack of land, but is there something, can you talk a little bit about, is there something we should be doing to address that deficit as well in our market and the impacts of that and how we can?
All right, that's interesting because I haven't thought about that since I was focused on the 120% below for this presentation. But with that said, we do have, so currently we have an approved subdivision in the West Hills that goes up the hill that we, that's going to be very difficult to bring in in an affordable way. The cost for development on the, on the Western Hills in terms of the geotech that needs to take place there, in terms of the, the homes will need to be sprinkled because of the incline of the streets exceed 15%. And then also there is water infrastructure needs there that are not funded in any other mechanism than the development. So those will more than likely be higher-end homes happening on the hill as it goes up. And there's about 280 units that are in that zone that are already plotted and approved but aren't served with infrastructure yet. So we haven't, what we'll start doing as we start going through the growth process and planning process, and we haven't done this yet, once we've established what our need is, we'll start looking at how do we achieve that need within our existing UGB in terms of the different housing elements? And then if we can't achieve it within the existing UGB, what's the next game plan?
Okay, great.
Thank you. But we should be considering, I mean, every community needs the full breadth of housing and, and the representative demographic that goes with it.
Right. I mean, like just you see the impact it puts pressure from both sides, right? Like that makes it everything more difficult, and those, and the resources that come in as a result of that.
Yeah. And this is from 2017, so it'll be interesting to see how this would update with our escalated house. So housing prices are rising fairly significantly year over year right now in McMinnville. So those numbers could be changing because it's the units that would have been considered applicable for the 120% may have shifted to the right.
Okay.
If that makes sense, right? A $450,000 home is now 550.
So, okay, thank you.
Other comments or questions? I can read none. Again, I'd just like, go ahead, Adam.
Heather, you talked about some different ideas from Bend and Portland, but as far as cities our size, is there any examples as far as, you know, what you have on that punch list for 2020? Where they've been successful in cities our size and haven't disrupted the livability and the culture of those cities?
So that's a great question. And we do try to look at comparable cities to McMinnville in terms of size and, and situation. You know, we are not adjacent to, we're not suburb of a large metropolitan area. And our most comparable city actually is Redmond. Redmond is able to achieve, their program is, is based on new housing development. So they do have UGB land supply. And so they are working through new housing developments based on that. And much like Bend, are requiring affordable housing as part of their annexation agreements. So they're requiring a certain amount of, of the housing units to be affordable housing. And they're also requiring certain densities with those housing products as well. So, thank you. But that's a great question and we should continue to try and, and search for that.
Go ahead, Zach.
You also talked about alternatives for revenue generation for systems development charge that wasn't putting burden on new development and alternatives to that. So you started to talk about other communities, I think Bend specifically, about where they've gone on that, but then I didn't really hear any.
Yeah, so it's not a system development charge because that pays for your public facilities. So this is a construction excise tax. So it's an additional tax on the building permit, much like the school excise taxes. And it's to create a fund for affordable housing. It's enabled, it was just recently enabled by state legislature for around the state. At the same time, they enabled the inclusionary zoning for structures of 20 units or more. So I think that was 2017 or 16, the long session in 16. And Bend had been doing it for years. So they got grandfathered in and they've been doing it for, I think, almost 20 years collecting this fund. And so you collect up to 1% on the building permits for housing. The discussion has, and that's where you, when I showed that graph of how many units have been achieved with the Affordable Housing Fund, that's what it's coming from in Bend. What, what the discussion was amongst the Affordable Housing Task Force and the development community was if you continue to put additional fees onto the building permit, you're essentially assigning more costs to the units which are transferring to the end user. And so you're contradicting your, your, your achievement that you're trying to achieve, which is the affordable piece of it. So then we talked about, is there a way to do an escalator where, you know, homes built at this value are, have the excise tax at 0.25% and homes at this value are 0.5% and you know, that type of thing, to try and to make sure you're not passing too much down the chain to, to the affordable housing units that you're trying to achieve.
And at, valuation is determined at point of permit application by the builder just saying how much that's going to be valued for?
No, so it's, it's achieved by the table that we use for building permit valuations, which is the same valuation that's used around the state more or less.
What's the input to that though?
Oh, what the, what the, so when you come in to pull a permit on a home in McMinnville, we put it, there's all sorts of different things that input into that calculator in terms of size of the home and type of the home and things of that nature.
Yeah, but then there's a, a value of that home, right? How does that get calculated, based on the size or it's?
Uh, you know, I don't know. So I, I would have to go back and find out because what we're trying to prevent is builders will value their homes in different ways with us. So we're trying to create a sort of, a equal playing field across the board with the science. And that's why we have the other calculator table. I don't know enough about that.
So we're trying to make a better system on determining the actual value.
Yeah. Yeah, because you could, as a builder, come in and say, it's costing me $150,000 to build this. Or you can come in and say, I'm going to sell it for $300,000, right? And if our permit cost is relative to what you tell us as the value of the home is, you can tell us the value many different ways.
Right.
Yeah.
Other questions? Again, Heather mentioned that our chair is, is Remy and then Kelly's on that and out in the, yeah, out in the audience, Mark Davis is a part of that. Again, a group that meets regularly, good discussion, hard discussion because there's a lot around the table on a very tough topic in this community. So thank those that are serving and under the leadership and direction of Heather. So thank you, Heather.
Under the leadership and direction of the, the chair and vice chair. We just support them.
Thank you, Remy.
As a staff, so, yeah.
Okay. That takes us to our second presentation this evening, which is going to be on the floating zone for transitional housing. And Heather and Tom will be, looks like Tom will be leading us in that presentation. Welcome, Tom.
Thank you.
And there's a memo in your packet, staff report that relates to this.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. This is a, be a informational presentation tonight. There's no action for you to take. I'll be providing an update on where we are with this item and looking for any input or direction you have on how you'd like to move forward. Got a couple of options outlined for you. This is not a public hearing, so it's not been advertised for any public testimony. And I know you all have probably been hearing about House Bill 4001 that was introduced last week. And I'll be talking about that briefly and what some of the implications might be as that relates to the floating zone as well. So touch on that towards the end. So when we're talking about what, what is the floating zone, there are really a couple pieces to this, the way it's structured. I'll talk through what those are. I'll talk about the purpose of, of how this is structured, what we're trying to achieve with the proposal. The first item would be actually kind of the enabling legislation, amending the zoning ordinance to establish the provisions for a floating zone. And a draft of that with the recommendation from the planning commissions in your packet is Exhibit 1. The second part of that would be the program set up to have sort of two, two levels of review, two stages. And so the first one would involve a RFP process where a city would advertise an RFP, people could submit proposals. And if they were selected as one of the top two proposals, then they could proceed to seek land use approval based on the new enabling legislation. So I'll talk through that a bit more, how that works in a minute. So, but the three pieces that would need to be in place to enable the program are the enabling provisions and the ordinance, a resolution that would come to you specifying what the, essentially the RFP would look like, including the evaluation and scoring criteria that would be used to review proposals that would be selected to move to the land use approval process. And then also an establishment of a review committee to review those proposals with the idea of having diverse representation on that, to have a panel to review those and score those based on those criteria. So those would be the three elements. The only one that's a land use element that would go in the, through the land use hearing is the zoning ordinance amendment. And with the floating zone proposal, we've identified an eligibility area outlined in the white dash outline there, and I'll talk about a little bit more. But that's predominantly an industrial area, as you can see, and that's been one of the key items of discussion and concern as we've gone through this process. So what, what would the proposal do? Again, it creates the enabling law. It authorizes the city to issue the RFP for, to solicit pilot projects to go through the land use process. As it's written, it would only allow two pilot projects to be selected. So it's focused on not trying to enable essentially, I'll talk about the specifics of it, but essentially transitional type of housing on a broad scale. It's trying to provide opportunities for innovative proposals to help meet the most critical needs. So the best proposals that would do that would be selected to move forward through the land use process. So if someone was selected and wanted to go through that process, that land use approval for the, to have the floating zone actually applied to the property, to have the approval for the site development, that'd be a separate publicly noticed land use hearing when someone would choose to go through that process. So again, the, the purpose is really, the focus of this is to authorize transitional types of housing and shelter in the community to help meet those needs that Heather focused on, trying to provide opportunities for a path to self-sufficiency, some opportunities to, for co-location of supportive services that may not be accommodated as well under the traditional zoning structure. And also some opportunities with the eligibility area for nearby vocational and workforce, vocational training, workforce development partnerships in the vicinity. And it's, again, it's not intended to solve all the problems. It's trying to help address some of those needs that exist in the short term where we continue to work on some of those items that are critical to address the needs in the longer term. So that's one piece of that whole puzzle. And why this approach, again, we're looking at trying to accommodate, address sort of the short-term the short-term need. As we've gone through our analysis of land need and our buildable lands inventory, there's identified surplus of industrial land, identified deficits of residential and commercial land to meet our needs. And it takes time to go through that process to add inventory. So there's an opportunity to look at whether there might be some sites where there's a good fit within that area. Not every site would be a good candidate for these, for an application for the transitional type housing uses, but there might be some sites in there that would be a good fit based on the type of project and the location selected. The pilot projects in the floating zone, basically it provides an opportunity for a property owner to have additional options to have that designation applied to the property versus just initiating rezoning that would change what's permitted permanently, keeps the industrial base zoning in place so that there, that could be used for those uses or returned to those uses in a fairly simple manner. The two-stage process is intended to provide, again, with the RFP process followed by the land use action, really a high degree of community and stakeholder oversight in all respects in terms of use, development, operations, before zoning is applied to the property, before things move to that stage. And with the way that the enabling legislation is written, it identifies uses, it also includes development standards to try to ensure compatibility between properties, rather than some emergency ordinances have taken the approach that they'll just waive standards to allow kind of a catch-all, any, any use can locate anywhere kind of thing, so. So Heather talked a lot about the need. Again, we've been trying to work together with a number of community partners and nonprofits to try to help address that wide range of both long-term and transitional housing needs as part of looking at all the options that are available, again, looking at both short-term and long-term opportunities to address those needs, many of which are there today. Heather described the, kind of the trends that we're experiencing where those housing prices just are increasing substantially faster than, than wages are, and really focusing on trying to help stabilize the situation for people that are finding it hard to find or stay in housing, or that may already be out of housing and looking for a place to live and get back into housing. And it's really, the situation we're finding it affects people all walks of life, all, all across the spectrum, the reasons why they're not housed or why they're, they have lost the housing that they had and aren't able to afford new housing. So there's a lot of need in, in many respects. One clarification, as we went through this process, there were a lot of other things occurring simultaneously, some of them in the similar areas. So as we started talking about the floating zone proposal, we had a property owner that was looking at developing the River Gate project that you're all familiar with. A lot of people thought the floating zone was intended to enable that project to move forward, and that was, those are independent items. That, that project could have moved forward if the applicant wanted to do so with or without the floating zone. It wasn't required as a, a enabling legislation for that type of project. So this is completely independent, and I wanted to clarify that. Just a couple of questions. We did an informational session for the public and want to help kind of frame some of the questions for property owners, too. So again, this isn't a proposal to rezon someone's property if they don't want it rezoned. It's a, puts a, the floating zone in place so that someone could choose to have that applied to their property if they wanted to. If it's adopted and someone owning the property within that eligibility area wanted to submit a proposal, that would be their choice. And if they are selected and through that process, if that was in place, then they'd be eligible to go into the land use process if they chose to do that. So it's all, all based on property owner choice. Heather talked about some of the history, the work on the action plans that the Affordable Housing Task Force has worked on. This gives you a little bit of background on the work that, the history related to this proposal specifically. So as part of the early action plans, the task force looked at a variety of approaches to address the variety of housing needs. This is one of the alternatives that came up and was selected to, to be developed and refined a little bit further into a proposal. We started having conversations with some of the stakeholders, trying to get feedback as we started putting this together and get a feel for concerns and issues that were out there. Basically, in February and March of 2019, there's a working group that started developing the proposal and brought that back to the task force for recommendation, did some work sessions with the planning commission, did some additional stakeholder outreach, and then entered into the formal public hearing process. There are minutes from the planning commission meetings in the, your packet this evening, so you can get some sense of the type of testimony we received. The first hearing was in June, and there was a substantial amount of testimony. There were some recommendations for some changes to the draft proposal that were helpful. And there was interest in providing additional outreach to some of the property owners that weren't within the eligibility area that were nearby. So we did some additional outreach and notice to some of those additional property owners, came back for a second hearing in July, and at that time heard additional, additional testimony, and the planning commission recommended approval of the proposal with some suggested amendments. At that time, they also talked about whether, based on some of the testimony, they might want to evaluate an expanded eligibility area and thought that there was some urgency in taking that forward as, as proposed with the, some of the changes in the text, and that there would potentially be an opportunity to expand the area later if needed, but they didn't want that to hold up the proposal from going forward. Based on some of the testimony and conversations that we continued to have with different property owners, different parties, did have additional conversations and held a listening session in November, although that was not well attended. We did send out, noticed all the, the property owners and only ended up with two people attending. So we don't know exactly why that was, if there was a sense that, you know, there'd already been an opportunity to weigh in on, you know, through the public hearing process. This was intended to be more informal, to, to have a chance to have conversations about the proposal and the issues and look at, you know, different, different ideas in a less formal setting than the public hearing setting. So we, we did have that feedback. We went back to the task force in January and shared kind of what the history was. And again, this originally initiated with the task force. So the task force had suggested that we, that just move forward to counsel with, for discussion, direction, with consideration of looking at an expanded eligibility area. So that's, that's kind of how we moved through this process. And the ordinance piece of this, the adoption of the floating zone as a new chapter in the zoning ordinance would be a legislative change to the zoning ordinance. So it's not subject to some of the provisions that you deal with in terms of quasi judicial hearings. There's no time limit on acting on anything like that. But again, there's, this would, when it's eventually on, you know, placed on agenda, if that's how you want to move forward, that would be as a legislative hearing, and we have a couple of ways we can bring that back to you. So Option 1, outline on page four of your staff report, that would be working with that direction, suggestions from the task force to look at what a broader eligibility area might look like, outreach to folks in that area, have some conversations and additional informal meetings before, you know, looking at a revised proposal and then placing a revised proposal on a future agenda. The other option would be to take the planning commission's recommendation, put that on an agenda for you. And then at that time, basically you have the options for any of the actions specified in the zoning ordinance for either adopting the proposal, adopting in amended form, not adopting it, or calling for a public hearing, and then taking testimony at that time to decide how you want to, to proceed. And if you took that option, you'd still have the opportunity, if you met or called for a public hearing, if you wanted to continue it to a later date and consider those revisions at that point by the Affordable Housing Task Force or anything else, still be an opportunity to do that. So kind of the main difference there is, do you already know kind of how you want to move forward, or do you want to explore some options further before you bring something back to put on the agenda? And as I noted, I wanted to update you on House Bill 4001 as it relates to this. So this is a pretty significant bill, has some pretty significant implications for local government. So this first slide summarizes the, one of the key provisions of the bill. I'll kind of note what the, some of the other sections are in just a moment, but the language says, "The governing body of a local government shall approve an application for the development or use of land for an emergency shelter on any lot or parcel." It defines what the emergency shelter is. It's pretty broad. "Notwithstanding," and it lists several land use statutes or statewide plan or any LCDC administrative rule, or any local land use regulations, zoning ordinance, and basically other planning documents, if the emergency shelter is operated by a nonprofit, including religious corporations or local government, and if it includes facilities or space for residents sleeping and bathing." So that says if some, if a nonprofit comes in and says, "I, I want to develop an emergency shelter on any lot or parcel," the local government shall approve that application, notwithstanding any applicable land use regulations. So as you can imagine, that has some implications for, what would that mean for something like the floating zone? So the other key, this is kind of the major provision, so the, there are general provisions. It defines what emergency shelter means. There's actually a provision in there that says if someone comes in and applies for that and the application has to be approved, if, if something's built that doesn't comply with the land use regulations, if it's essentially built under those kind of local government preemption provisions, then that structure, that the facilities can only be used for emergency shelter, so they can't change the use later and still be exempt from land use regulations. Again, there's the preemption on those local regulations as well as state laws specific to those shelters that would be submitted by a nonprofit and include the required facilities. That section would be repealed on July 1st, 2021, so we certainly have some questions about what that means and what happens if something is approved prior to that date and then the provisions go away on that date. What happens to those things that are still on the ground? We don't know the answers to that yet. The definition of emergency shelter includes a use that's described in one section of the statute, and that provision also gets amended with the bill as it's currently written to include overnight parking of vehicles in parking lots for emergency and transitional housing. So that would fall under the, part of the definition of emergency, emergency shelter. And then the, really the second, the other three major sections of the bill specify funding for certain types of shelter and provide a method for distributing those funds and appropriate $40 million to Oregon Housing and Community Services to, for grants and technical assistance for those. So that has, you know, some significant issues to be thinking about. We've already provided some comments back to look at, try to answer some questions about some of the implications of what that bill might mean. So I wanted to just kind of touch on how that relates to the floating zone proposal. So again, if, if that bill becomes law, it would preempt local land use regulations for emergency shelters by nonprofits until that provision's repealed in 2021. That would include any preemption of floating zone provisions for an application if someone, a nonprofit came in for emergency shelter with the required facilities during that effective period, that floating zone provision would not have any bearing as would any other land use regulation. For any other proposal, if someone came in, if the floating zone was in place and someone wanted to apply for that floating zone approval and they were not a, one of the specified nonprofits, all the local land use regulations would still apply. So the floating zone would provide that oversight process, someone wanting to come in through that floating zone approval process. And again, the provisions in House Bill 4001 note that if someone comes in and the city is compelled to approve the application and it doesn't meet land use regulations due to the preemption period, that it can't be used for any other use other than the emergency shelter. So that provides potentially some incentive for someone to come in and voluntarily comply with standards during that period, knowing that they may want to have flexibility in the future use of any facilities that are of any permanence. So that, that has, you know, continued viability of use under land use laws that might occur after emergency shelter use. So again, just kind of want to outline how we got here, what the proposal is about, and look at a few options for how we might move, move forward, and give you that, kind of the quick overview of House Bill 4001 and how that affects this work or potentially affects this work. So let's, I have, and be happy to answer any questions you have, or.
Thank you, Tom. Let's go ahead. Any questions?
Will you send us the slides on the House Bill, your breakdown, your summary slides?
Absolutely.
4001, thanks.
Do we know who's sponsoring, who's sponsoring that bill?
It's the Speaker co-tax bill.
Other questions?
Just speaking to this, what other areas would be considered on Option 1? I mean.
So there, I think there was some thought that it wouldn't necessarily have to be in contiguous boundary. It could be expanded potentially to incur, include other industrial areas or potentially broader industrial, commercial sites that didn't get fully vetted at that point. We, it was sort of a question of should we go back and, and look at expanding on, on that area to include either a broader boundary or a definition of sites that would be eligible?
The main feedback I received on it as well was that, why this particular area? So that if you were to, some of the feedback I received was a question of if you were evaluating one part of the city or one, why would you not evaluate all land that was zoned similarly?
And I understand the idea that we do have a surplus of industrial property, but yeah, it seems to me, just by some of the things that have been done in Portland, like the, some of the women's housing and stuff, you know, that even residential lands might be considered if we had any to, to develop, you know, just even an acre, you could put some tiny homes on. So just a thought.
Other questions?
Yeah. Tom, can you talk a little bit about, I know on page five, 2.5, long-term use, it talks about, does the development present an opportunity to return the site to permitted use as an underlying zone, should current emergency need for shelter and transitional housing pass and/or be accommodated elsewhere? Can you talk about how that would carry through? I know that it's in the evaluation of the initial plan, but how that would carry through to like what they build on the, on this, the land and like in the whole process of evaluating it moving forward? Like what does that look like?
Sure. So if the idea, and this doesn't specifically set any, part of the idea as we start formulating this was to say, we don't have all the solutions. We know there are a lot of creative people out there that are working on difficult issues, so we want to provide some flexibility on this, but we don't want it to be open-ended in terms of potential impact. So we want to have, ensure we have standards in place to deal with impacts, but we want to provide some flexibility on what kind of proposals might come in. The, the idea there is potentially if, again, it's, there's a site that, depending on how permanent or temporary the nature of the improvements are, you know, someone may want to help address an immediate need, down the road we get more land that could help meet that need, and the proposal was more of a, you know, more temporary in, in nature of the improvements, then could that be? more of a, you know, more temporary in nature of the improvements, then could that be returned back to, say, industrial use in the future? Could a building that might have been built to help provide support services be repurposed for office or industrial uses in the future? So that's one of the criteria in the RFP selection process in the draft, but that's also something that as we take this kind of legislative concept forward, we can ask those questions. Do we, is that a critical issue that it be returned to industrial types of uses, or is that a wish list but not critical?
Right, right. Yeah, I think that's, and I was wondering about that as well, and that was the only reference that I caught that, towards that, because I know it's able to be returned to, but I know also that when you construct something on a property, depending on how you construct it, it might be difficult to return it to that use, right?
Right.
So it sounds like it's still up for discussion, what exactly that means, and how much emphasis there will be on making sure that it can be returned to that.
Sure. Anything that's in the draft proposal, if there are questions or concerns, we can certainly evaluate any of those issues, and if there's concurrence, we could, you know, adjust the proposal to be responsive to any, anything that you would like to see revised.
So Counselor Stassen, if I can follow up. It was important when we first started talking with the industrial property owners and stakeholders, the initial, and this was back in like 2018 when we first started floating, floating the idea of the floating zone. The concern was, we don't want to lose our industrial land supply impermanency from McMinnville. And so it was a discussion of, this needs to be a property owner initiative, so initiated by the property owner themselves, and that they have the opportunity to decide how they want that property to be positioned to serve this interim need versus their long-term investment, industrial investment in that property. So that's why we kept it as flexible as possible and just thought that the proposals that came in would show what that property owner wanted to do or not do.
That actually answers my question really well, because really the controls on that will be the property owner who still owns the industrial land.
Yeah. And in fact, at the public hearing, Walt, who was representing one of the property, are you okay with me saying this?
He's pointing out I have a conflict on this matter.
Was representing one of the property owners, and the discussion they brought forward was, the right for this to be industrial property always needs to be first and foremost in this dialogue, because that's what the, that's the underlying intention for these properties in the eligibility area.
I guess as I listen to this, and I know I may be beating a dead horse, because I'm sure you've all heard this from me before, but I think back to Portland's trial on using the Kenton Women's Village, and they developed it actually at a residential zone. They had some excess land that was going to be developed in another year, and they had tiny homes put on it with a container kitchen and other shower facilities and toilets and a truck. And they lived there for a year, and it was an opportunity for them to transition into something a little bit better. And then it was moved to another site, and I don't know how many times it's been moved, but it has been used a couple of times and actually rather successfully. And that would leave a very small imprint from what I could see. So it just seems like an opportunity there to do something and use those houses over the Blanchett Farms.
Yeah, so there's ways to do this that are not as permanent in terms of the improvements, and as Tom said, we wanted people to be able to come back with as creative ideas as they had to meet the intent and the need of the program. What we are looking for though tonight is direction from you as counsel on how you want to move forward with this. It's been a dialogue for about two years. The Planning Commission did go through a public hearing process. After that, we were asked to visit with the industrial stakeholders again, the business community, because they felt they hadn't been engaged enough. And we sent out mailings and hosted the open house and had two participants, one who was, actually they're both supportive of the program, one who had a project they wanted to promote for the program. And we didn't hear from those who weren't supportive, though we know they're there, right? And we've heard from individual members, but we didn't, they didn't come to the open forum, but we, it's in a holding pattern at this point in time, and we want to know if you want to move forward and bring it to you, city, on this future city council agenda as is, or if you want us to bring it forward to you on a future city council agenda with direction on how to change the eligibility area, if that's what you want to do.
And then on top of that would be House Bill 4001 that could have impact after the short session. Good chances it may not get through the short session, but could be in the next long session possibly. But that could have impact, correct?
Yeah. Well, that would, that would definitely have impact, because it exempts land use regulations everywhere in the city.
Yeah.
For these same projects.
Other questions?
So what's your feel on that, kind of from a staffing perspective then? So we're stuck in this holding pattern, but all of this work could be kind of null and void, depending on this House bill. So what type of demand does it put on your department between, you know, if we go, if we were to progress? Do you mind going back to the slide with the options on it?
No, sorry.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. So what kind of demand does it put on your department if we, you know, consider expanding it? What type of demand does it put on your department if we say, yes, we want to move forward with this right now, et cetera?
So there's two questions in there. One I'm hearing is the impact of House Bill 4001 relative to this, and the capacity of the department in terms of moving this effort forward when 4001 is still out there, right? So 4001 is fairly limited in terms of who can participate. It's a nonprofit provider, and there may be other entities that want to come forward with a project that doesn't meet those criteria, that would meet a criteria under this RFP process. So it would, it could potentially create two paths, and who knows if 4001 will move forward or not. So with all that said, in terms of the workload, if we were going to bring this forward to city council as a public hearing, the bulk of the work has been done in terms of crafting the code and the RFP process, and it would be noticing the public hearing and hosting that, and for you to have, you know, your consideration and deliberation. If we were going to amend the eligibility area, that would be, again, be noticing. I mean, that's, that's something that we can do fairly easily and submit the new maps and things of that nature. So I don't, I don't think, I think the bulk of the work for either of those two options has, has been done, and we're now in a noticing period and hosting a discussion at the city council level.
And expanding the eligibility area doesn't kick it back at all to, doesn't kick it back to planning commission, or does?
We would have to visit with our legal counsel, a little bit more Affordable Housing Task Force asked us to do that. It'd be how big you expand the eligibility area in terms of changing what the Planning Commission recommendation was to you, in terms of changing the program. So we wanted to find out what you were thinking before we had that discussion with legal counsel.
So other questions?
I did go to the November meeting, was that when it was, and heard one of the ideas, and that was what was discussed in the Affordable Housing Meeting, and we all thought that even though it was a long shot, we thought it was an opportunity to bring it to the council and kind of let them talk about this floating zone area. So personally, I would like to see it go forward, either with or without the additional expansion of the zone. If it's not a lot of work, I think perhaps adding the expansion might not be a bad idea, but, you know, I'm sure we'll be developing more opposition as we go if we do that. But by the same token, just the opportunity to be able to provide some transitional housing for people for a period of a year would be a nice thing to be able to do.
Other questions, comments? Let's, go ahead, Adam.
Out of other cities that have done a floating zone, Portland, and I don't know if Eugene has one, is there anybody that's put a hard date on how long a property could have this floating zone on it, or is it strictly up to the private property owner? I know Kelly talked about the one in Portland moving spot to spot, but is that because of a, something in their policy, or just?
Well, it was within the middle of a housing development, like they took a chunk out of Baker Creek North and let it, because it was over here and they're building over here this, for the next two years, and then they'll build over here, so it had to move after that.
And just to be clear, we're not aware of anybody doing a floating zone like this in the state of Oregon, so we're exploring those. What the city Portland did was they issued an emergency shelter ordinance, much like what's being proposed now by the speaker at the state level back in 2016, 2015, it's been renewed every year, where they have exempted some of their land use regulations in their commercial and industrial zones. I'm not familiar with the Kenton one, but where they said that these shelters will be able to locate in those zones with a very expedited land use process, and not a lot of the land use regulations are in play.
The, the way the ordinance is written now, if a property owner had applied for that designation and later wanted to have that removed, I mean, it gives them more options, but if they said, "I've had, had something here for three years, and I want to focus on industrial development or sell on market just for industrial development." What's proposed in the ordinance is that removing the floating zone designation is a simple request at that point. So it's, having the designation applied in this case is more stringent, but it's a very easy process to have that removed, so that only the industrial-based zoning would apply going forward. So it's property owner choice again.
But as far as for adjacent property owners to that site, it's permanent as long as the property owner that owns the property that that floating zone on wants to keep it there, he can keep it there, or she can keep it there as long as they'd like?
As proposed currently.
As proposed. So the intent was that the proposer would need to provide that. What's, what is your long-term intention? And that the review committee consisted of people that also included stakeholders from the eligibility area, so that it could be reviewed by people who had industrial property and businesses in that area.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? So before us is a direction needed by council as to where to go with option one or option It doesn't commit us to anything other than a direction and further probably presentation to us. So do I have?
Yeah, well, what we would do is probably schedule your public hearing process at that point in time, and bring you whatever you have directed us to bring you. Another option for you is not to have it coming to you as a future city council agenda. It's recommended by the Planning Commission right now, so we're bringing that recommendation to you.
I'm willing to move. We consider option one for the future.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those not in favor?
Remy's not here.
You gonna wait for Remy, or?
Can we wait for Remy?
Well, I mean, if we are at a tie.
Yeah, I mean, if, if it's...
I'm a nay for option one.
Okay.
Very well.
Remy's back. Remy, we're doing, we're just, we've had a motion and a second for option one, and we're just going through right now as to whether we could support option one.
I can.
Okay.
Aye.
So we've got three.
I'll support option one.
Okay, so unanimously, we have a...
Adam's a nay.
I was a nay for option one. I would rather see a successful pilot project in an area before we expand it citywide.
I'm torn about that as well. I feel like it would be good for us to focus on an area and not try to, not put more money into it, but if the rest of the council wants to go with option one.
If it helps, the, some of the feedback we heard in terms of expanding the eligibility area was to expand it to all industrial zoned properties for a sense of equity. So if the, if the discussion is, we have a surplus of industrial land, which is what our needs analysis shows us, deficit, that's currently acknowledged, not the one we're working on right now, but that we have a deficit in commercial land, we have a deficit in housing land, and we have a surplus of industrial land. If that's the premise, then all industrially zoned land should be part of the eligibility area rather than the sort of contiguous area that Tom described. And that was part of the dialogue that we heard from some in terms of broadening the eligibility area. Others said, you know, citywide to try and create something, you have more possibility to creating something, but...
But it really doesn't, and it really doesn't, it still limits to two projects, so it really is still just deciding where those two projects will be.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'm in support of option one then. That sounds reasonable.
Okay. So again, we have a motion and a second on option one, and again, we voted, and Adam, where are you?
So Heather, just for clarification, option one is motion and seconded is just for industrial land citywide, or it's for all?
Well, I'd like to ask clarification of your body as to what option one.
I would say to specifically, to, with option one, that we would go with the recommendation that we've been hearing at Affordable Housing Task Force, which is to expand that eligibility area specifically to industrial land with inside the city limits.
Yes, I'll amend my motion to that.
But not to commercial or residential?
Just to industrial land.
Okay. If it's that, I'll get behind it.
And then when it comes back to us, is it, do we choose then if it's a public hearing, or will it be a public hearing, or what are, what's our thoughts on?
That's my understanding is that then we'd move forward with a public hearing.
Yep.
Get input.
Cool.
This does not commit us just to move forward with the process and have staff help prepare for that.
Okay.
And your public hearing process isn't tied to any timeframe, so you have the opportunity to listen and continue, you have the opportunity to listen, direct more research, and continue to a later date. It's, it's your process, this is a legislative process.
I think we've given you a direction.
Yep.
Any questions from staff to us?
And with it being legislative, we can talk to constituents about it?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Tom, thank you for the presentation. You so much.
Oh, sorry.
No, I understand.
This evening on our consent agenda is consideration of minutes for our August 27th, 2019 work session and regular council meeting. Anyone would like to take that item off of the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Zach and seconded by Kelly. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, I say nay. Consent agenda passes unanimously. Did I miss that?
Yeah.
Yes. I'll go right back to that. And so the consent agenda passes unanimously, five to zero. Let's move over to advice and information. Adam will start with you, and this is an opportunity for counselors to report on committee assignments and board assignments.
WICOM meeting's Thursday. Our January meeting was canceled, and Airport Commission meeting meets next month.
I think, I think, I think we're fairly covered for the evening, but I will say that we do have a second meeting happening with Gospel Rescue Mission and some other leaders in our faith-based community coming up in another week or so.
Thank you. Kelly?
In regard to affordable housing and housing coordinator, I've received a positive response from Newburgh tonight, so maybe those discussions are going to continue on. So hopefully that would be nice to maybe get a regional housing coordinator out of that between Newburgh and us.
Is it McMinnville? I think we've had that.
Yeah, we had our goal-setting meeting. It was very positive. There was a lot of really good discussion. I guess the question is, you know, what we can do and what we should do, and they're doing their very best to come up with a good plan. Very, very productive meeting.
Thank you. Zach?
Historic Landmarks Committee, no meeting since the last council meeting, so no update. Landscape review, same as Historic Landmarks, McGinnville Community Medias next month. The KOB TAC, still awaiting our Joint School Board City Council meeting, and the MAC PAC, the enrichment advisory committee group, so that was the group formed for the discussion around facilities and the Aquatic Center and Community Center. We met last week, last Thursday, for our first meeting. It was really good, dynamic group, good co-chairs, a woman who's fairly new to the community. It was really good, dynamic group, good co-chairs, a woman who's fairly new to the community, a longstanding resident, are, have good reins on that, and we've got good staff. And so starting what is going to be a long process, but it's a good group and excited to be part of it. That's my update.
And Wendy?
The Murdock meeting was canceled this month, so we'll have an update after next month's meeting.
Okay. Just a couple of things. Last Thursday, we had the Mid Willamette Transportation Advisory Committee. Primarily, we spent a couple of hours, but we went over the STIP, which is the state funding for transportation, and where they were going to utilize those monies for the 2020 through 2022. The bypass was not, additional monies put in on that. Tomorrow, we have a really unique opportunity. Dave Hugelberg, Commissioner Olson, myself, the President of ADAC, Brent, we're going to be meeting with the Chair of the Oregon Transportation Committee and the Department Head of ODOT, plus the now operational Director for ODOT in talking about the bypass and where we're going to go. So it's a one-on-one meeting. We've been following them for the last four months and I, we were able to get in front of them, but that typically never happens. So that'll be 10:30 in Portland tomorrow. Then just from a Water and Light perspective, go ahead. From a Water and Light perspective, General Manager John Dietz and myself are leaving next, a week from Thursday to go to Washington DC to lobby for state, regional, and MAC Water and Light as it relates to energy, meeting with all of the congressmen, congresswomen, and senators. We do that on an annual basis, and so we'll, we just go back and make sure that we're getting our story heard as it relates to electricity. Department Heads, Chief.
Yeah, real quickly, sorry. Give you a bit of a project update since we did come to this body for the radio system upgrade, and that is going along very well. We are probably a week, a week and a half from going live on the digital system for Police and Code. I will tell you that our initial testing on that has been fantastic. The clarity of the transmissions are incredible, and I will also say that our range certainly has improved just with our three tower site. We're able to communicate from my office up into Sherwood, which is incredible, and we would be fuzzy up into Newburgh at the most. So that project is developing rapidly, and we should be concluding the testing portion, I think, by the end of this week and hopefully going live next week, or at least probably midweek at the latest. That's our hopes. So thank you, that's a project update. And lastly, wanted to just give the council a little heads up. February 27, the PD and some other partners will be part of the McMinnville Student Safety Summit that's taking place that evening. I believe opening remarks are about 6 o'clock, you know, do some breakout sessions, some, that has to deal with school safety, reference cyberbullying threat assessments, technology, how to ensure your children are being safe with their technology. And again, our school resource officers, myself, and I believe a captain will be their assistant if you have students. So February 27, it will be a pretty impressive evening, I think, for at least passing along information. That's what I've got.
Thank you, Chief. Heather?
Yeah, so just quickly, I wanted to update you on the Three Mile Lane area planning process. We've, we've been in sort of a, putting our heads down and doing a lot of analysis for the last six months on it, and not a lot of public discussion. What we're doing is we're, ODOT has decided that they want to do a new transportation model to understand how to address the transportation facilities on Highway 18 and serving our preferred land use alternative. So if you recall, there's an interchange planned right now for Highway 18 and is their way to move forward with a less costly improvement out there, and that's why the new model's so important. So we're working through that, and that's what's taking some time. But with the time, we're able to dive a little bit deeper into the area planning from land uses and, and then take what's bubbling up in our needs analysis and start thinking about how this area can serve that. So we've been doing a lot of charrettes with our consultant team, and I feel fairly comfortable with what's coming out of that in terms of looking at high-density residential neighborhoods there, as well as the single-family neighborhoods, looking at a lot of park amenities in terms of how to serve that area that is devoid of a lot of parks at this point in time in terms of the neighborhoods, and then looking at our, our commercial and industrial needs. So I think that the area plan's getting more and more refined from a land use perspective based on what our needs are that are coming out of our needs analysis, so that's good.
Thank you, Heather. Jennifer?
It says touch, perhaps? So I do have something to report for the first time, so I'm really pleased to be able to say that we got our audit filing into the Secretary of State and into the GFOA Awards Program. Unfortunately, we did get a finding out of the process, and so in your next meeting on the 25th, there's a fairly new legislative requirement that within 30 days that you get a finding out of an audit, that you do a plan of action of how you're going to address the things that you could improve to avoid that in the future. So that'll be before you, two weeks from now, and our auditor was already planning to be here on March 10. So we will be having her report back to the council as well as the Audit Committee meeting on the 10. So it's a little backwards in terms of order, unfortunately, that's just the way it played out, but definitely pleased to get the process, that piece of it wrapped up, and looking forward to doing things a little differently and it going smoother in the future, so.
Thank you, Jennifer. Mike, just, I was talking about the STIP, that there wasn't anything going to the bypass, but McMinnville's getting a substantial dollar amount for the Three Mile Lane Bridge out of the, the budget for Region Two, and I think there was some money set aside for some improvements on 99, some things they were going to do, so I didn't want to leave you out from that perspective.
The traffic safety, traffic signal improvements that we've talked about with some recent land use processes are included in the STIP for construction.
Anything else? Claudia? Jeff?
Mayor members of the council, next Monday, the 17th, is President's Day, so our non-24/7 services will be closed in recognition of the holiday. We sent out an email earlier today canceling next week's work session, just for additional clarity and for the public record, the Mid Willamette Valley COG Annual Meeting and Dinner is that night, and several people in this room will be attending that dinner. And then finally, on Thursday night, the 20th, the McMinnville Downtown Association will have their annual awards dinner. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. That takes us to our resolutions this evening. Our first resolution, Resolution 2020-8, is a resolution adopting the Affordable Housing Action Plan for 2020 through 2022. So we'll call on Heather to, or Tom, to bring that to us.
Just a very brief few comments here. This is the action plan that Heather went through in her earlier presentation, so this resolution would adopt the Affordable Housing Action Plan for the Affordable Housing Task Force for the next three-year period.
Thank you. Any questions for Tom on that? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion.
Aye, so moved.
Second.
Been moved by Kelly and seconded by Zach. All in favor of Resolution 2020-8, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by saying nay? Resolution 2020-8 passes unanimously five to zero. That takes us to our second resolution this evening, which is 2020-10, a resolution amending the composition of the Affordable Housing Task Force and appointing members to the task force. And so, Tom, will you take that one? Go ahead.
Keep this brief. The, so the first action, amending the composition of the task force, essentially adds an ex-officio county representative with the rolling up of the Housing for Homeless Subcommittee back into the functions of the task force itself. That would appoint Lindsey Manfrin, County's Health and Human Services Director and prior Chair of the Housing Subcommittee as an ex-officio member, and the, that's the only change in composition in that covers that appointment. The other appointment would be the business representative position. Have a recommendation for appointment of Marcus Straw, who's President and CEO of Applied Physics Technology, and that position, as he notes in his application, part of the intent of the business representative position is to look at the, how lack of affordable housing or workforce housing and can it impact businesses and economic development and what kind of needs they have as we look at how to meet those needs going forward. So it's along that resolution.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions of Tom? Hearing none, I will take a motion.
So moved. So moved. Second.
Been moved by Wendy, seconded by Kelly on Resolution 2020-10. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Resolution 2020-10 passes unanimously five to zero. Our next resolution this evening is Resolution 2020-11, a resolution approving code compliance liens on properties to recover unpaid corrective action costs and civil penalties citation. And so I think, Nick, are you going to take that for us? Go ahead.
I am, yeah. And just a quick recap, since amendments to Chapter Two and Chapter Eight were passed back in August, code compliance staff has a couple of extra resources to help take care of some of our properties that have significant health and safety issues going on. Since that time, we've been able to maintain about a 90% compliance rate, which we're really proud of, but we have had a few properties that were, were fairly complicated and we weren't able to achieve voluntary compliance with those property owners, and those are outlined in the report as well as before and after photos. Like I said, each property had some significant issues. We had some hoarding in a backyard, some rat harborage, that was on social media quite a bit. We had a hazard tree in town that was at a vacant abandoned property that was, if it were to fall, it could hit any of the three surrounding properties as well as the right-of-way. And then lastly, we had tall weed and grass removal over behind Lynnfield College. Again, that was another abandoned property. Each of these property owners were given a significant amount of time to come into compliance. We have a 21-day process, but I can confirm that each of these property owners were given, each of them, you know, about two months to get in touch with us and make some progress, and we weren't able to, to get that. So we did solicit some vendors to come out and abate those and issued invoices to the property owners for repayment and weren't able to get those. So that's where we're bringing, bringing them forward for liens. Additionally, we have a few citations, two of those are related to the properties that had abatements, and another is one that we're still working on, so yeah.
Thank you. Again, thank you for your complete report, including pictures, because it helps us visually to see before and after and what we're dealing with. So any questions, further questions for Tom? Or I mean, Nick?
Do you know where we are in position for liens on the 2715 Northeast E Lane?
That's, that's in here.
That's your action tonight.
Yeah, yeah, but are there other, what's the, how clean is the...
No, we'd be subordinated. There's, there's another lien on the property.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved, Resolution 2020-11 has been moved by Zach and seconded by Kelly. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So Resolution 2020-11 passes unanimously five to zero. Our last resolution this evening is Resolution 2020-12, a resolution awarding the contract for the Lafayette CIPP project, Project 2019-12. And so, Mike, if you'd bring us up to date on that?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'll refer you to your brief staff report that's in your packet from Project Manager Roy Marquis, as well as the proposed resolution and vicinity map for the project to line, put a cured-in-place liner in approximately 1,500 feet of sewer mainline in the north part of Lafayette Avenue. This work is being done in advance of a major grind and overlay project that we're planning to do on Lafayette Avenue later this calendar year. As outlined in the staff report, we had three bidders. Michael's Corporation was deemed the lowest responsible and responsive bidder with a bid amount of $109,991.56. Work will be paid for out of the Wastewater Services Fund, and unless there are any questions, I'd recommend the council adopt the resolution as presented.
Thank you, Mike. Where's Michael's Corporation located out of?
I would have to look that up.
Okay. But they're, they don't seem local?
I think they're a national company, and they've done a number of projects, including projects for us in the past.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mike, from the council?
What's the timeframe for the project?
The work will be completed this fiscal year, so, but by the end of June 30.
We've got Resolution 2020-12 before us. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
So I've got, I think, Remy moved and Kelly seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying nay. Resolution 2020-12 passes unanimously five to zero. If there's nothing else that comes before us, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.